Good afternoon. It's now for day, the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Today is Monday, November 9th. The time now is 2 o'clock PM. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and for coming to Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Public notices were disseminated via email to all centers and all main media broadcasting hours on Friday, October 30th and November 5th, which was Thursday. And the agenda today, the bill will be list hearing today is Bill 415. And I'll just let my colleagues know and the audience know that we will have another hearing at 3:30. So this will wrap up in an hour and hopefully an hour and 20 minutes. This bill, Bill 415, there's 35 introduced by Senator Mary Camacho Torres, an act to appropriate $50,000 from the unexpendable funds of her office of Senator Mary Camacho Torres, the Department of Administration, and to further authorize the transfer of $50,000 from the general fund appropriation in Chapter 5 of Public Law 3599 relative to conducting a study of all positions covered under the nurse pay plan. General rules of this Zoom meeting. The Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and we mute all Zoom participants until called upon by myself. Members of the committee and or noncommittee members wishing to speak may indicate their desire to meet through the in-app chat feature. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by myself before speaking and begin by stating their name for record keeping purposes when called to speak. Please ensure that you are unmuted. Committee members, all members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal infirmance as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing by my host. Please ensure that the video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any other activity during the hearing. But if you're going to get a drink and you're going to eat a cook or something, I have no problem. Okay, just, we just keep it neat. Failure to maintain visibility may cause removal from the meeting livestream. I'd like to acknowledge the callers that have joined us this afternoon. We will begin first with the author of the bill, Senator Mary Camacho Torres. Thank you, Senator. And we have in our audience, we'll begin with Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. Thank you, Speaker, for joining us. We have Senator Teresa Lai and we have Senator Kelly Marsh Taito and also Senator Tello Taito. And we also have in our audience, we have folks that'll be testifying. I believe John Fernandez will be showing up. If not, we have, we do have written testimony from him referencing this bill. But we also have Dr. Suzanne, Susanna or Suzanne Kanashiro. I hope I didn't murder your name, Doc. But she's from the Department of Public Health and Social Services. We will begin first with Senator Torres to provide an opening statement on her bill. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank you first of all for expediting the hearing of this bill. I greatly appreciate it. As you mentioned, Bill 1415-35 is an act to appropriate $50,000 from the unexpendable funds of my office to the Department of Administration and to further authorize a transfer of $50,000 from the general fund appropriations in Chapter 5 of Public Law 3599, the Budget Act, relative to conducting a study of all positions covered under the nurse pay plan. This measure recognizes the need to address the issue of competitive nurse pay relative to national averages within the US. While Public Law 35-36 had authorized the expenditure of funds for a government-wide study which included nursing positions, no appropriation was actually made to carry out this provision. And to this end, Bill 415 identifies a direct source of funding for a nurse wage study. As my colleagues are aware, the cost to conduct a study varies based on the number of positions covered under any pay plan. Our nurse pay plan currently has 38 positions, including the LPNs and the CRNAs and school health counselors or school nurses. For comparison, an OPA competitive analysis and research report which covered 10 audit positions cost approximately $20,000 to run the study. Should this $50,000 be insufficient to procure these services, this measure, Bill 415, further authorizes the transfer of up to an additional $50,000 from the general fund, allowing for a total of $100,000, which should be more than enough to conduct a study exclusively on the NPP positions. By providing funding, Bill 415 works in tandem with the recruitment efforts of another bill that I authored, Bill 239, which I introduced alongside Speaker Tina Munya Barnes last November to add Guam to the Nurse Licenseure Compact, allowing nurses in other nurse licensure compact states to practice here without having to obtain additional licenses. As we recall, Bill 239 was well received at its public hearing that was conducted by the Committee on Health on September 30th, which garnered strong support from the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Guam Regional Medical City, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the Guam Nursing Association, and the Health Services of the Pacific. At the same time, that hearing underscored previous discussions with the community to bolster local nurse retention. Together, I believe that these proposals provide a multi-pronged response to Guam's nursing shortage. And I thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing the critical need to hear this bill swiftly. It is my hope that when these measures move forward, that it is accompanied also by the recruitment efforts of Bill 239, the Nurse Licenseure Compact bill. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Dr. Kanashiro, I'm going to allow you the opportunity to testify. And then if the superintendent doesn't show up, I'll read out his testimony and then we can move from there. All right, Dr. Kanashiro, please.
Well, you know, Senator, I was actually testifying for Bill 42035.
Well, you could do for both.
I'm in support of this bill because, you know, it does address, it does address the nursing shortage here at the Department of Public Health and Social Services. So we have a hard time recruiting here because it's more, because they pay more in the private sector, even in the hospital. So we have a hard time retaining our nurses here at public health. So for, so I am in support of this bill because it will show that actually the nurses here at public health are underpaid. So I am in support of this bill.
All right, thank you, thank you, Doc. I don't see Mr. Fernandez on the Zoom, but I'm going to go ahead and read his testimony. It starts on November 9th. A holiday chairman, Snobson, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill 415-35 and the need for an updated review of GovGuam nursing pay. I ask that the pay of Guam Department Education Nurse also be included in this review. Nurses are a critical part of the healthcare industry and they are in short supply. The U.S. Bureau of Statistics projects that as a nation, we will need at least 11 million additional nurses to alleviate the ongoing shortage that is experienced nationally as well as on Guam. The nursing shortage is due to a number of factors, including increasing demand for nurses as the population ages and a shortage of supply due to the lack of potential educators, high turnover rates, aging workforce, and increasing burnout. There are also, there are also factors stemming from the work environment and setting, including the increased threat of emotional or physical abuse faced by nurses, the stress created by operating in situations where the nursing force remains short. And the exaggeration of these factors during this concern, pay may also be an issue. The median salary for a registered nurse in the US is approximately $73,000 per year or $35.24 an hour. On Guam, the median salary is $48,010 or $23.08 per hour, with new RNs starting at a salary of $36,129 or $17.07 an hour. For all the reasons above, I support conducting a wage study to ensure that the nurses here in Guam are being paid at an appropriate pay scale. During the pandemic, we have seen the impact of having to support an emergency situation with an existing shortage of nurses. Luckily, Guam has been able to procure the services of temporary travel nurses to fill in the gaps at a high price for these services. School nurses were able to join forces with the Department of Public Health and Social Services provide critical frontline support for community health screening, testing, and contact tracing. A number of nurses also supported the efforts of the Guam Memorial Hospital and our quarantine and isolation facilities. When the school year begins, these nurses will be at the frontline to train employees in preventing the spread of COVID-19, monitoring and addressing the health needs at the schools, and supporting the contact tracing needed for rapid response and prevention in Guam's largest government agency. Currently, we are working with the governor's office on further enhancing GDOE's ability to utilize our school nurses to provide school-based health services to our children and family. But having said all of this, there will continue to be a need to ensure that Guam can retain and attract nurses to support our level of effort at the community health front and in our healthcare system overall. As the legislature considers Bill 415-35, I would urge that it ensures that the wage study review conversation for all nurses, including our school nurses at GDOE. I would also urge the legislature work with their education committee to determine whether a wage study for teachers can also be included in this effort as well. Over the past two years, GDOE has advocated for a wage study for both critical employment areas. Again, thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony to Guam Legislature on Bill 415. If you require additional information, please feel free to contact me. Senator Monti, John Fernandez Superintendent. That's his testimony. Senator Torres, would you like to make any statements before we move along among our colleagues? Because I don't think anybody else is coming on board other than, it's a good bill. We got money in your account. We just need to make sure that we have the, and then the BBMR's fiscal note states that the governor has the transfer authority. She can probably move money over there to cover the other $50,000.
Well, that's, I just want to make that point too, that we don't know what it's going to cost. $50,000 may, maybe enough. I mean, we used a comparison of what the OPA's cost was for their 10, their 38 positions in the nursing thing. But, you know, it doesn't have to, the impact from the governor's transfer authority doesn't necessarily have to be that much. So if anything, $50,000 is a good starting point, you know, to get, to at least get very close to what a contract will probably be for this study. But Dr. Kanashiro, good improvising on Bill 415. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, do you have anything you would like to say in reference to the bill?
Thank you, Mr. Literally, we sort of. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're coming in broken up every now and then. It's coming in broken up.
Okay, can you hear me? I just want to say that I thank the author for literally utilizing the funds from her office. And I support the efforts of this measure and hoping that we can see this bill sooner than later on the session agenda. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Teresa Lai, and then followed by Senator Kelly, and then Senator Tello. Senator Drews?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. And yeah, I definitely agree with, with the intent of this bill to, to conduct a study for nurse wages. I was hoping that DOE would be here because we did have in the 2020 budget a provision that authorized them to do a classification and compensation study for all government of Guam physicians to include positions covered under the nurse and educator pay plans. And that wasn't done at that time and, and this language was not included in the FY21 budget. So I just want him to, to assure us that we can, you know, do these studies like, for example, nurse pay plan and then, and then educator pay plan or how we would be able to do that so that, but I do agree that the nurse pay plan, it is a priority. The teacher pay plan, they are priorities. And so I hope that we can, we can accomplish all of those. I also hope that there's no fiscal note that I could find for this bill. But when it says to transfer $50,000, it's just not clear where that will come from in the, if needed, from the executive branch appropriations. It pretty much authorizes it from any executive branch appropriations. But, but I'm hoping, yes, that the governor will be able to transfer that if necessary. I do believe it is a priority. I also hope though that, you know, to do this study is nothing if we can't actually pay them. So I just hope that we could get that done sooner rather than later. And because as we know, we lose nurses every day to this non-competitive compensation that we have, for example, at public health, at GMH, and in our public institutions. So we lose them to the private sector and we lose them off island completely because of the higher wages that are, that are in, you know, other areas. So I also just want to, I'm going to talk to GMH. I hope that this will not deter any of their efforts. They're supposed to be underway with efforts to increase nurse retention at GMH to make sure that there is equity at GMH between, you know, nurses. They've given them incentive pay, but they kind of scrapped that nurse ladder that they were working on to, you know, promote them. And so they, they're supposed to be working on another nurse retention that's supposed to be discussed with the board, I think, this week. But yeah, we were, you know, it was described to us that there, you know, the specialty areas, for example, ER and ICU, that those, that we need to do more to ensure that we can attract people into those areas, ICU and ER, to attract our local nurses to be promoted into those areas with additional pay. So I'm hoping that this just all works together and not contrary to those efforts. And I think it does. So yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I support this bill.
All right, thank you, Senator Teresa. And I agree with you when you identified GMAs and public health. Those are the critical areas that I, I'm very concerned about. And if anybody at DOE is working, Jim isn't, so be it, get the pay. But we need to protect our folks on Guam and not lose them to everybody else grabbing them from private sectors or off island. Senator Kelly, do you have anything, ma'am, you'd like to say on the bill?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. Yes, you know, I too am in support of the bill. Just anything that is helping our efforts in retaining and recruiting our nurses and others that are needed within the healthcare professional field on Guam. We've been hearing and we're learning the hard lesson of the state of the health of our island, but also the state of our healthcare system on island. And more and more of us are learning this and becoming aware of this and finding out those critical issues. And so to be able to create action is what is needed. We heard not too long ago in one of the roundtables that was held by the committee that has oversight over health. And it was really important to hear from the nurses and the different programs themselves, some of their issues. And some of what they shared was, we may be as many, as much as 1,000 healthcare professionals short of our needs on this island. So we all need to, and I especially thank the author of this bill for being part of finding every means that we can to, to build up that 1,000 healthcare professional capacity and just making sure that we are working towards not only recruitment, but retaining them. And that does mean addressing these issues of differential pay. So yes, it's, it's good to see movement in this direction. And I look forward to the government working together towards many more steps like this to get us where we need to be. So no questions at this time, but happy to be able to vocalize my support.
All right, thank you. Senator Jim, thank you for joining us, but we're going to move to Senator Tello Taito. And then we'll get you on the rebound. Senator Tello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. You know, I, I know that we're doing everything we can to, you know, provide the workforce that we needed for our public health of, in any kind of health field. We are very short of it. We've been talking about this for years. And, you know, I had an opportunity to, to review when this bill came up, the, the Competitive Wage Act of 2014. And in that, it indicated 38 nurses' positions, 38 different ones. In fact, it dedicated two pages toward that. And it talked about the steps from step one all the way to step 18, I think it was, yes, step 18. And I'm just surprised that we haven't implemented that because if you look at some of the, the pay grades in that, it's substantially high compared to what the testimony from the superintendent said, quoting, I think he, it was $36 versus a certain amount. I didn't, I didn't write that. I'd have to pull it back up. But it was about $12 difference from what he mentioned compared to what was in the States. But as I looked at the nurses, the nurse pay plan that was in the 2014 Competitive Wage Act, it's substantially more than that, actually. And to hear that it has never been implemented, I'm very surprised at that. But if they review back to it and if we can just implement something that we've already paid for in, in a study, in a plan, I mean, that's the route to go. My concern is that we, you know, I'm in support of this. If $50,000 is all it takes, but what if it needs more? And I think having Department of Administration to provide some kind of testimonies, especially with regards to the Competitive Wage Act of 2014 and why it was never implemented. I'd like to know that, that reason, number one. And number two is regarding the $50,000 appropriation from the senatorial office, is it necessary to indicate additional information, such language specific to unused appropriation from a specific fiscal year? So that's just something to look, look at in crafting the legislation. You know, I, I support this. But I also would like us to look at, you know, what we've already done with regards to the Competitive Wage Act of 2014 and why it has not been implemented. And like I mentioned, there are 38 positions in the nurses' positions that have been identified in this wage act. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Senator Jim, and thank you, Senator Louise Munya, for joining us. Senator Jim, do you have anything you want to comment?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're good, okay. Senator Louise.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And again, dispense for my, for my tardiness. But no, at this point, I don't have any, any questions. I was en route to be stationary and so I didn't catch some of it. So I'll just review some of the testimony prior to me jumping on. And if I have any questions, I'll address you, Mr. Chair, or the author of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you, Senator Tello, for bringing up the issue about the HAY study. That would be something that I would have my staff look into because exactly, if Senator Mary is willing to appropriate $50,000 and it's not needed, and we need to figure out a way now how to fund to pay the nurses. Because Senator Drews would be like, if we got the money, let's pay them. But we need to be focused. You know, there's nothing against DOE, but we're talking about the folks that are at GMH and the folks that are at public health. Sure, when they do borrow, like the governor did, when they do borrow to get to assist them, then they should fall under that same pay. And I understand the testimony of Mr. Fernandez talking about they'll be assisting. Great, but I don't, I don't know. I, I look at GMAs, they're, they're a different group of individuals. Of their public health is a different group, DOE is a different group, even though they're all nurses. But, but I think we need to take a look at it and Senator Torres' bill is to, is to conduct the study. And it talks about nurses, it didn't differentiate between where? Nurses in general in GovGuam. And if, and if we can meet that requirement, then we can move on from there. Senator Torres, your final comment and then we'll move to close. And then we'll, we'll reach out for more tests, more testimony from the other folks that are out there. All right, Senator Torres?
I just want to thank everyone for participating. It's very clear to me, based on the comments that have been made about the need to retain nurses and the need to address the, the compensation concerns that a study real time needs to be done. We're in the middle of a pandemic that is not, the end to it is not immediately foreseeable, notwithstanding that we've had strides made in the development of a vaccine. But the nursing shortage, we know, is always, is going to be a perennial problem on Guam. And the most, whatever we can do to address all concerns that lead up to either recruitment or retention, I'm willing to put my money on, money that, you know, I saved in my, in my office budget. Insofar as a previous study that was commissioned in 2014, I'm aware that there were some compensation adjustments made to nursing pay. And I know that, I know that from a personal perspective, you know, having a nurse in our family. So regardless of, of, you know, how it was implemented or what, the fact remains that we are in a real-time situation in 2020 where it won't hurt to do another study, especially when medical personnel is critical in a health emergency environment that has no sunset within the foreseeable future. So I stand by the need to do this. I'm putting my money behind my belief in the need to do this. And I don't think that many nurses out there would discount the need as well to evaluate in real time what the, the nursing pay plan should be. So I, you know, I just want to thank everyone for, for keeping an open mind to this. I think that in all our efforts to address the nursing shortage, this is just one component that can only help in, in how we address that. And that's, that's all that I'm doing with Bill 415 is I'm doing my, my measure, my one little measure to help the, the situation, the, the multi-pronged approach to what we think is, are the issues that lead to nurse shortages, retention, and recruitment. So with that, I want to thank everyone for coming on board and most especially you, Mr. Chair, for being very swift at making use of my money so that we can help public health and our nurses on Guam.
Oh, yes, thank you, Senator Torres. I'll be Santa Claus. Show me the gift and I'll pass it on. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no additional individuals to present further testimony in this bill. The committee will continue to receive testimony following this hearing for acceptance of any additional information or public testimony on the agenda item discussed. I will reach out to Department Administration, Senator Tello. I will ask about the HAY study and as mentioned also by Senator Torres and the other issues that were brought up by the, our other colleagues. And you may submit, if you have any testimony to submit, you may submit it to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature, the Guam Congress Building, or through email at Senator Joe S. Snobson at gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending the public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestion. The public hearing is now adjourned on Bill 415-35. The time now is 2:29. Stay safe, wear your mask, wash your hands, and practice social distancing. And we will return, the committee will, will come to order again at 3:30 on, on the Bill 4, let me just get the exact bill number here real quick. Bill 420-35. So Dr. Kanashiro, take a break. You got an hour and we'll see you back. So Dr. Kanashiro, take a break, you got an hour, and we'll see you back here. Thank you, my colleagues. We'll see you shortly.